Would everyone rise, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the invocation to be given by Councilman Argo tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you pray with me, please?
Precious heavenly Father, Lord, first of all, thank you for the gift of this day. Lord, we have opportunities that you've laid before each and every one of us. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to be in these chambers this evening. Lord, we thank you for the presence on each of our shoulders. Lord, we ask that you continue to guide us. Lord, we know that in these times that you take -- I ask that you continue to keep your hand on his shoulder. Lord, I ask that every time that he needs guidance, he seeks your will. I also ask a special blessing on his family, that they understand the trials and tribulations that elected leaders, especially the mayor. Lord, I also ask that you be with our city, that, Lord, that you ask them to continue to lift prayers and lift each of us up in their prayers. Lord, we ask that our fine men and women around the globe, Lord, that they are a tremendous sacrifice on the line, Lord, so that we can be here this evening. May we be here this evening, be pleasing to you and beneficially to you.
Thank you, Councilman Argo. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Wood.
Here.
Councilman Argo.
Here.
Councilman Miller.
Here.
Councilman Renninger.
Here.
Councilman Bowles.
Here.
Councilman Fink.
Having a quorum, I now call this regular meeting of the Prattville City Council to order. Our character trait of the month is attentiveness, showing the worth of a person or task by giving my undivided concentration. Our next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from our January 4 meeting, both the public hearing and the city council meeting, and our special meeting of January 9. These were distributed in advance. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Well, move.
Moved by Councilman Renninger, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Fink. Any discussion, corrections? We've already approved, I'm sorry. All in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The chair votes aye, and the minutes are approved. Like to this point in time, introduce our elected officials who are in the audience. We've got Senator Brian Taylor, if you'll stand, Representative Paul Beckman, County Commissioner Sid Thompson, Sid, and Sheriff Herbie Johnson. Is Sheriff still here? Can -- okay, he stepped out. A couple others were here earlier for our swearing-in ceremony, but we welcome you to our meeting tonight and invite you to be present at any time that your schedule permits. At this point in time, we come to the part of our agenda where we hear from the public, basically anyone who wants to come before the council to share with us whether the item is on the agenda or not, I ask that you come, raise your hand when you're recognized, come down to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and then share with us. Representative Beckman?
Paul Beckman, from 1803 Terradry, Prattville, Alabama. Listen, I just -- Mr. Taylor and I have came by to this festivity. We want to hold our hand out in our office for anything that you all should need, especially for the new governor. I mean governor, excuse me. The new mayor. The new mayor. I'm so used to speaking of governor since last night we had a new governor that was elected, and everybody's all excited about it. But my point of it is, I want to wish you all the best of luck. I wish you that you will prosper, and my office and Mr. Taylor's office is always going to be open to you for anything that you should need. All it is is one phone call away. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Representative. Are there any questions? Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Finnegan?
My name is John Lee Finnegan. I live at 211 Dear Trace, and to say I'm excited is saying it lightly. I'm very pleased. Congratulations, Bill, and I hope we can all work together. And since this is a new beginning, since this is the start of a new dawn of the city of Prattville, would it be possible to find out or have said what the total debt of this city is at this moment, including leases, bonds, loans, et cetera? What is Mayor Gillespie starting with?
We can get that for you.
I'd like it now, if I may.
We're not going to be able to provide it right now.
Thank you.
I mean, the figures exist. We've spent a lot of time, you know, looking at the finances and whatnot.
Could you kind of give an average, maybe?
I really don't want to, because I would be cautious about misstating it, and it's such an important piece of information, but I can promise you we can get that for you.
Is there a timeframe?
I probably can have that to you within a couple of days.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions for Ms. Finnegan? Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to address the council tonight? Mr. Graham?
Congratulations to our new Mayor Gillespie. I will continue a little bit on the same train of thought that Ms. Finnegan was recently approaching with, from a little different aspect and perspective. To make my comments brief, I am extremely unhappy with the city debt load, how and why the debt was established, and how it has been obscured from public access by the previous administration. I like the way that Mayor Byard reiterated in a recent article that it was you, the council, not him, that voted on and approved all these business deals that worked out abysmally for us. With that in mind, I think that you have enough history with me and a few other citizens to realize that we know the fiscal condition of the city, and you may as well be open and honest with us. Previous audit and budget presentations have been less than transparent and have integrated confusion in the formatting in order to deceive and render it impossible to identify the desired specific information regarding the handling of the city debt. I understand that preliminary results are imminent for 2010 fiscal year. If you do not present the debt service in a comprehensive manner, you will have told us immediately that you will be nothing more than a continuation of the same old disingenuous policies. The revenue from VAS Pro and the exchange should be segregated in the revenue collected, and the rebate should be clearly identifiable along with the revenue collected. These are big numbers and should be presented clearly in both budgets and audits. Anything less is unacceptable and a misrepresentation of the facts. Coming up short, three or four million in 2010, we know that since you recently borrowed the last three million, that your total principal obligation, including VAS Pro and the exchange, is around 100 million. Any accounting presentations that you make should isolate and clearly address your plan to service this debt. If I am wrong in my assessment, any accounting presentations that you should make will clearly show me the error of my way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Are there any questions from the council for Mr. Graham? Okay, thank you. We appreciate you coming down. Anyone else in the audience wish to address the council tonight? Mr. Mullins?
Dennis Mullins, 111 Daniel. Again, I also want to congratulate Mayor Gillespie now on his new position with the city. Look forward to working with you and moving this city forward, like you said in your statement. What I would like to address the council with is just following on the same line. How is the council come along working on the actual budget for this fiscal year? And secondly, when can we expect some work sessions to be put out there so we can come sit in on some of the work sessions? That was talked about previously, so we're looking -- I'm looking forward to some work sessions myself.
Yeah, and I'm going to give an update from the Finance Committee in just a few minutes.
Okay, so that's forthcoming?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, some dates as well as work sessions and how we are coming as far as on the budget?
I will be giving an update in just a few minutes.
Okay, great, thank you. That's all I got.
That was it?
That's it.
Any questions from the council for Mr. Mullins? Okay, thank you, Mr. Mullins. Anyone else in the audience wish to address the council tonight? Okay. Oh, John, Mr. O'Driscoll?
John Paul O'Driscoll, 403 Harvest Loop, Prattville, representing a Tog County PALS, and wanted to bring your attention to the electronic recycling we have scheduled for Saturday across from Winn-Dixie from 8:00 to 11:00 this coming Saturday, and we would encourage the city and like the county commission has done in the past to offload old equipment that's sitting, occupying storage space. We invite the public to come out and get rid of old electronics that -- and to recycle. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Councilman Renninger?
John Paul, I'd like to commend you and your associates for the outstanding job that you're doing for our community.
Thank you.
And I also want to, once again, appreciate the -- tell you how much I appreciate the recognition that you gave our Rotary Club and our community in the recent PALS conference. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. So, and if you miss Saturday, we'll have another one on May 14, so.
And the hours are?
From 8:00 to 11:00, both times. So if any city departments has equipment, I'd be glad to work with them, you know, to -- you know, we offloaded about a ton at the county offices, which freed up space, and all that equipment was all dusty, lying in storage spaces.
Thank you.
Can I distribute this to you?
Sure, yeah, if you want to, we can pass that out.
And also, I've got to congratulate Mayor Gillespie.
Anyone else in the -- anyone else wish to address the council tonight? Mayor, do you have a report?
It's a little different on this side, looking toward you gentlemen, but it's not too bad of a sight, but I want to thank Mr. John Paul for -- I want to thank Mr. -- I want to thank Mr. John Paul for coming down. I was actually planning on talking about our recycling. I know I have several pieces of equipment I need to recycle, and so I do encourage all the citizens of Prattville to recycle, because besides saving our environment, we're also saving our landfills, which are rapidly filling up, and recycling is just the right thing to do. So please, please recycle. The other thing I wanted to talk about was that we fortunately have all of our department heads and all of our city employees who went to Maryland for our training, and they all arrived back home safe and sound. And from all reports that I have, talking with Rocky Milliman, our EMA Director, that everything up there went extremely well. They had multiple exercises covering response and recovery, and all the reports I have is that the teamwork was excellent, some of the best that they have ever gone through. On our agenda, I'm going to talk about Resolution Number One, how we need to go and support our payment for $479,549 to our municipal workers' compensation fund. That does need to be voted on tonight, and that's been held over. But Resolution Number Two, I would ask that you guys hold that, if that's your discretion on that, that can be held over to our next council meeting. The resolution to adopt our comprehensive plan, it'd be great if you went ahead and supported that also. That has been approved by the Planning Commission, and there's no money to be expended on that, so it's -- we've already discussed that, and I think everybody's quite aware of that one. On ordinance number eight, that can also be held, that can be held until our next meeting. It's about to adopt and act a new code of ordinance for the city of Prattville, so we should be able to hopefully pass that next council meeting. And with that passage at that time, I'm going to be working real hard to get that put on our city website. Hopefully, that will help some of our front office help on some of their day-to-day activities and calls that they get about ordinances and so forth, but we're moving really far and fast on that one now. And hopefully, when we do start getting that online, we'll also end up putting -- I'm going to work very feverishly to get any and all of our other documents put online, and hopefully work toward getting all of our checks put online also. I do want to say thank you, Mr. Paul Beckman and them, for coming down, Mr. Taylor, our State Senator, and besides that, that's it.
Any questions for the mayor? Councilman Bowles?
You know, it don't -- it's two ways straight on looking back at you.
That I'm certain.
I'm looking forward to working with you, and congratulations again.
Well, thank you. Thank you all.
Any other questions for the mayor? Thank you, Mayor. We'll now turn to reports from councilmen on special committees. It's hard not to say Councilman Gillespie. Councilman Wood?
No.
Councilman Argo?
No.
Councilman Renninger?
No, this day.
Councilman Bowles? Councilman Fink? And I will report on the Finance Committee. I think from previous reports, most members of the audience, and certainly city staff and fellow councilmen, will know that we have spent a lot of time in the information collection stage and looking at where all of the city resources are, opportunities where we could reduce expenditures. Nothing's written in stone, and there's not a list of anything that's definite in terms of where we're moving with the budget, but the major benefit of that process, which was very extensive and detailed, was to gain information that would enable us to critically assess the budget that was being developed and worked on by Mayor Byard. And that was scheduled for the first presentation to the Finance Committee this coming Thursday, January 20. And with all the recent changes, and I think everyone's aware that a lot of those happened on a very, frankly, a very short timeframe, in terms of the changes in the previous mayor's departure to a new job and the new mayor, and all of those sorts of things have just sort of thrown us into a little bit different environment. And conversations with Councilman, now Mayor Gillespie, have been that he is coming up to speed on what the mayor and his staff had developed and is still planning to present that to us over the next week or so. And that's sort of where we are right now. So it's kind of a changing of the guard, which obviously includes the, not only passing the baton in a variety of other ways, but certainly the budget itself. And we look forward to continuing to work closely with the mayor as we hammer out a budget. I am very committed, as is the rest of the council, to having work sessions on that process, once we start to try to hammer out the details and craft the final budget that best suits the needs of the city. And again, not only for the remainder of this fiscal year, but one that will enable us to build for the coming three to five years. So it's not just a single-year budget that we're looking at when we talk about developing the fiscal year 2011 budget. So when you ask me what the exact times are, every time I've tried to sketch out a timeline and say it would be by this point in time or that point in time, the best-laid plans, you know, something comes up, it's either been more intensive in terms of trying to gather the information, and more recently, the change in administration. So I'm probably better advised not to give you a specific date, because then I've got to explain why we went past it. But we are committed to continuing to work on this and to get it behind us, because it's kind of stabilizing for the city, the city staff. It gives us a framework on where we are. So I think there's a real recognition that it needs to be done as soon as it can be completed, but at the same time balancing that with not wanting to do it so hastily that we don't do a good job with it. So having said that, I'm not prepared to give exact deadlines, but we're working feverishly to reach the endpoint. And again, that will involve one, if not more, work sessions. The next item of business before us is to look at the election of a pro tempore, which is essentially the vice president for this council, and that is a seat that was vacated as we looked at the departure of Councilman Gillespie. And then I was named to the pro temp spot. Councilman Gillespie was named to the president's spot at our call meeting Friday, and yesterday at 5:00, with the mayor's resignation being in effect, he moved from president to mayor, and I moved from pro temp to president. So now our vacancy is in the pro temp. So I'm now going to open the floor for nominations in that regard for the president, the president pro temp of the council. Councilman Bowles?
I'd like to nominate Mike Renninger, please.
Okay, Councilman Bowles is nominated. Councilman Renninger, do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Argo. Are there any other nominations? All in favor of Councilman Renninger for president pro tempore, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye. Councilman Renninger, you are president pro tempore. Congratulations. We still have a vacancy, and that is obviously the empty chair at the end of the dais, and that is the council District One seat. And I would like to outline for you a process that the council has moved towards that is going to address this issue. What we would like to do is to solicit letters of intent from any interested individuals who qualify, and the primary qualification, obviously, is that you meet the residency requirements for that district. A letter of intent that we would like in writing submitted to the city clerk, along with a resume, a brief resume that describes your background, your interest in the position, and also describes your community involvement. And the deadline for that will be Monday, two weeks from yesterday, which I believe Ms. Smith is the 31st, the 31st, and by 5:00 o'clock. So for those to be submitted to the city clerk, the subsequent step will be for the council, and this is going to be driven by how many applications we end up giving the council to look at those in an executive session, and whittle the list down to somewhere in the neighborhood of four, five, maybe six, again, depending on the number of applications that we get. What we would then do is, over the ensuing week, two weeks, conduct interviews with that smaller subset, the four to six individuals, and do that in a public setting, not public interviews with public participation, but in a public setting with the public welcome to attend and observe. And then, following that, to vote on a new District One councilman. We want to do that fairly expeditiously, and that's why I've mapped out about a four-week process there, because it means the citizens of District One would get back into the -- having a representative up here on the dais. So that's the schedule for the steps in that process, and we look forward to undertaking that. At this point in time, we will now move into our regular agenda. Item number one is a resolution to authorize payment of $479,549 to the municipal poll workers' compensation fund incorporated for workers' compensation insurance. This item was held from our January 4, 2011, meeting. Do I hear a motion on Resolution Number One?
You don't.
I don't motion on that, okay. Is there any further discussion on Resolution Number One? Councilman Argo?
Thank you, Mr. President. The only comment that I would make is not really pertaining to Resolution Number One, and I appreciate you outlining where we are on the budget, but if at all possible, at some point, I would like for you to brief us individually, collectively, email, however, and just let us know where we are with our general fund obligations. And the reason I'm asking is that because of the budget being recalled and us having to act on each individual item, we have no number in front of us to let us know where we are as far as dollars are available and so forth. I know that we held this two weeks ago. Mayor Gillespie's asked that we hold a couple of the others. It would just be helpful if we had that update, but I wholeheartedly move on Resolution Number One. Thank you.
Any other discussion on Resolution Number One? All in favor of Resolution Number One signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and Resolution Number One passes 6 to 0. Resolution Number Two is to authorize the promotion of one firefighter in the fire department to firefighter medic and one wastewater collection systems operator trainee in the wastewater department to wastewater collection system operator. Councilman Bowles, can you introduce Resolution Number Two?
Whereas a wastewater collection system operator trainee employed by the city of Prattville wastewater department recently completed training and subsequently testing through the Alabama Department of Environmental Management, ADEM, and earned certificates as wastewater collection system operator, and whereas the city of Prattville requires all wastewater operators to earn and maintain certificates, and whereas employee has attained certificate during a continuing education process and is eligible for a promotion and pay increase not to exceed $2,872, and whereas one firefighter employed by the city of Prattville Fire Department completed two years of educational process, passed a comprehensive test, and was issued license by the state of Alabama Board of Health as a paramedic, and whereas the city of Prattville operates an ambulance service and staffs the ambulance with licensed paramedics, and whereas the city of Prattville paramedic are rewarded an additional hourly rate for performing paramedic duties, and the paramedics will be assigned to the ambulance at an additional rate of $1.38 per hour not to exceed $2,850. Now therefore, be it unresolved by the city council of the city of Prattville, that up to $5,722 is hereby authorized to be expended for the general fund for the promotion of the wastewater collection system operator and a promotion of one firefighter, paramedic, are hereby approved. That's a move.
Moved by Councilman Bowles. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Argo. By point of order, this resolution will lie over until our next regular meeting. Item number three, ordinance to amend, Ordinance Book 2003, page 3, as amended by Ordinance Book 2003, page 5, Ordinance Book 2010, page 24, the Prattville environmental tobacco smoke ordinance for food and beverage establishments. Councilman Argo, would you introduce this ordinance?
Yes, Mr. President. Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Prattville that Section 2, Number Eight of Ordinance Book 2003, page 003, adopted on March 4, 2003, as amended by Ordinance Book 2003, page 005, and Ordinance Book 2010, page 020, adopted on November 2, 2010, is hereby repealed and replaced as follows. Section 2, designating food and beverage establishments as smoke-free or smoking. Section 8, subsection 8, establishments required to post signage designating the status of the establishment as either smoking or smoke-free may utilize signage as follows. Smoke-free may be used, may use the standard international sign for no smoking, a cigarette with circle and slash through it, or language stating no smoking, smoke-free, or similar language that is approved by the fire inspector. Establishments that are totally smoking or co-located with a smoke-free facility may utilize verbiage stating smoking allowed or similar language that is approved by the fire inspector. fire inspector. Signs must be posted as in the existing ordinance. This ordinance shall become effective upon its passage and publication as required by law. Mr. President, I so move.
Moved by Councilman Argo, do I hear a second?
Second the motion.
Seconded by Councilman Renninger. By point of order, this ordinance will lie, Councilman Renninger?
Mr. Chair, I request that we move on this. I see no reason to hold it over, so I'm going to request a suspension of the rules. The sooner we get this passed, the better off the business is going to be, especially those that have the corporate requirements or identification.
So, are you saying it's a suspension?
Moving for the suspension of the rules, Mr. Chair.
Motion to suspend the rules on item number three by Councilman Renninger, do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Argo. Is there any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? All in favor of the motion to suspend the rules on this ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Nay.
Chair votes aye, and the motion to suspend the rules fails by a vote of five to one. Item number four is a resolution to establish demolition and related costs for the demolition of 897 Pigler Street.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Renninger?
I request that we put items four, five, and six on a consent agenda.
Motion to place items four, five, and six on a consent agenda by Councilman Renninger, do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Wood, is there any discussion on the motion to place items four, five, and six on a consent agenda? And I read the titles. Item four is to establish demolition and related cost for the demolition of 897 Pigler Street. Item five is a resolution to establish demolition and related cost for the demolition of 737 William Wood Court. Item six is a resolution to establish demolition and related cost for the demolition of 745 William Wood Drive. The motion to place these on a consent agenda has been made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion to place these on a consent agenda? Okay. We'll now vote on the motion to place items four, five, and six on a consent agenda. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and items four, five, and six are now on a consent agenda. Now, I need a motion, right? Okay. Do I hear a motion for this consent agenda of items four, five, and six?
Mr. Chair, I so move for those items to be voted on on a consent agenda.
Motion by Councilman Wood, do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bowles. These items are now before us as a consent agenda. Is there any discussion?
No question.
Councilman Renninger?
Mr. Chair, if I might have a point of privilege to address our attorney. David, since this does require an expenditure of funds, do we need to suspend the rules before we can act on them?
It would be my recommendation you do that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Renninger. So, by point of order, these hold till our next meeting unless there's a motion to suspend the rules.
Call for suspension of the rules, Mr. Chair.
Motion to suspend the rules by Councilman Wood, do I hear a second on the motion to suspend the rules?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilman Renninger. The motion to suspend the rule has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion to suspend the rule?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Wood?
Joel, will you explain why we need to move on these to this body, please? And then, several districts, they're not all in one district, you explain.
Yes, sir. It would be helpful if you could move on these, and certainly in the absence of a budget at this point, we don't have funds that are appropriated for demolition. But, the ordinary process in our office is to work these cases, and we have worked them to this point where the property owner has been given notice that they have a dilapidated structure on their property, they've been given time to remove that structure or repair it, they've been given an opportunity to come before you and give reason for why they should be given an extension or why the property shouldn't be demolished. And we are at the point where we have to move forward with demolition, or we may have to go back and redo the title work to make sure that we have the proper owners. The longer we wait, the more we have the possibility the property could be transferred and there's some error in the process.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Wood. Any other discussion on the motion?
If I may, if y'all are going to take action on it tonight, you're going to need to amend line 49 in each one, so you'll be expending the money from the general fund because you
Right, we do the suspension first, so it's properly before us, then we can add an amendment, okay? All right, so the motion to suspend the rules is before us, we were having discussion. Is there any other discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? All in favor of the motion to suspend the rules on the consent agenda for these items four, five, and six signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and the rules are suspended. The consent agenda is now properly before us. Councilman Fink?
I'd like to offer an amendment, line item 49, to change the 2010, 2011 Planning Department home demolition dilapidated structure budget to the general fund budget. It actually, it's 49 and 51, to just FY 2010, 2011, general fund.
Ken, is it, I'm looking to make sure it's the same lines on all three, since... So, Councilman Fink, can I ask you to...
Yeah, do them individually.
Individually?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to do them individually.
Okay. You want me to make the amendments individually? Okay. I'll make an amendment to, for resolution number four, line item 47, to change the FY 2010, 2011 Planning Department dilapidated house demolition to the 2010, 2011 general fund. I would offer on resolution five to change line item 59 from 2010, 2011 Planning Department dilapidated house demolition to 2010, 2011 general fund. And I would offer the amendment on resolution six, line item 49, 2010, 2011 Planning Department dilapidated house demolition to the 2010, 2011 general fund.
Motion to amend by Councilman Fink on items four, five, and six, do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bowles, any discussion on the motion to amend? All in favor of the motion to amend signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and the amendment passes. The amended consent agenda for items four, five, and six is now properly before us. Any further discussion? Councilman Argo?
Mr. President, I just have one quick question. On resolution number five, it states 737 William Wood Court, and on number six, it's 745 William Wood Drive. Are those two separate streets, or are they the same?
They're two separate streets.
Two separate streets. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Argo. Any further discussion, questions? Okay. We'll now vote on the amended consent agenda of items four, five, and six. All in favor of the amended consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and the amended consent agenda passes. Item number seven is a resolution to adopt a Prattville Comprehensive Plan adopted by the Planning Commission. Councilman Wood, would you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Whereas the City of Prattville is authorized and empowered by 11-52-2 Code of Alabama 1975 as amended to formulate and adopt a plan for the future development of the city and its surrounding lands, and whereas the Prattville Planning Commission acting under the authority of 11-52-2 Code of Alabama 1975, together with the City Council of the City of Prattville, undertook a process to update the Prattville Comprehensive Plan adopted on February 1, 1996, and last amended on February 18, 1999. And whereas the Commission engaged in extensive studies of the environment, the patterns of development, the distribution of population, and the characteristics of the social and economic structure of the city, and studied and analyzed the plans of the state, county, regional, and municipal governments and agencies having an impact on the city. And whereas the Commission assembled an update to the Prattville Comprehensive Plan referred to as Prattville, Project Prattville, which is deemed appropriate and necessary for purposes of promoting the health, safety, and general welfare of the City of Prattville. And whereas all requirements of the laws of the State of Alabama with regard to preparation, consideration, and adoption of said Prattville Comprehensive Plan were met by the Planning Commission, and whereas the Prattville Planning Commission adopted the Prattville Comprehensive Plan on January 21, 2010, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, endorses the Prattville Comprehensive Plan, Project Prattville, adopted by the Prattville Planning Commission, and recognizes it as the guide for the future development of the City of Prattville. Mr. Chair, I so move.
Moved by Councilman Wood, do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Renninger, is there any discussion on this resolution? All in favor of the resolution to adopt a Prattville Comprehensive Plan adopted by the Planning Commission signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and this resolution passes six to zero. Item number eight is an ordinance to adopt and enact a new code of ordinances of the City of Prattville, Alabama, establishing the same, providing for the repeal of certain ordinances not included therein, providing for the effective date of such code and a penalty for the violation thereof, providing for the manner of amending such code and providing when this ordinance shall become effective. Councilman Fink, would you introduce ordinance number eight?
Yes, sir. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, section one, that the code of ordinances consisting of chapters one to 113, Appendix A zoning ordinance and Appendix B subdivisions, each inclusive, is hereby adopted and enacted as the code of ordinances, City of Prattville, Alabama, and shall be treated and considered as a new and original comprehensive ordinance, which shall supersede all other general and permanent ordinances passed by the City Council on or before January 18, 2011, to the extent provided in section two hereof. Section two, that all provisions of such code shall be in full force and effect from and after the 18th day of January, 2011, and all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this code are hereby repealed. Section three, the repeal provided for in section two hereof shall not be construed to review any ordinance or part thereof that has been repealed by a subsequent ordinance which is repealed by this ordinance. Section four, that whenever such code and act is prohibited, or it is made or declared to be unlawful or an offense or a misdemeanor, or whenever in such code the doing of any act is required or the failure to do any act is declared to be unlawful, and no specific penalty is provided therefor, the violation of any such provision of such code shall be punished by the penalties contained in ordinance book 2002, page 27, adopted the 5th day of November, 2002. Section five, that any and all additions and amendments to such code, when passed in such form as to indicate the intention of the City Council to make the same a part thereof, shall be deemed to be incorporated in such code so that reference to the code of ordinances, City of Prattville, Alabama, shall be understood and intended to include such additions and amendments. Section six, in case of the amendment of any section of such manual for which a penalty is not provided, the general penalty as provided in section four of this ordinance shall apply to the section as amended, or in case such amendment contains provisions for which a penalty other than the aforementioned general penalty is provided in another section in the same chapter. The penalty so provided in such other section shall be held to relate to the section amended unless such penalty is specifically repealed therein. Section seven, that a code, excuse me, that a copy of such code shall be kept on file in this office of the city clerk, preserved in loosely form or in such other form as the city clerk may consider most expedient. It shall be the express duty of the city clerk or someone authorized by him or her to insert in their designated places all amendments or ordinances which indicate the intention of the City Council to make the same a part of such manual when the same have been printed or reprinted in page form, and to extract from such code all provisions which may be from time to time repealed by the City Council. This copy of such code shall be available for all persons desiring to examine the same. Section eight, that it shall be unlawful for any person to change or amend by additions or deletions any part or portion of such code, or to insert or delete pages or portions thereof, or to alter or tamper with such code in any manner whatsoever which will cause the law of the City of Prattville to be misrepresented. Thereby, any person violating this section shall be punished as provided in section two of this ordinance. Section nine, all ordinances or ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are to the extent of such conflict hereby repealed. Section 10, this ordinance shall become effective upon its passage and publication as required by law. Mr. President, I so move.
Moved by Councilman Fink, do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Argo. By point of order, this is an ordinance, and it will automatically hold until our meeting, our next meeting. Councilman Renninger?
Mr. Chair, I request that we suspend the rules. We need to enact it.
Councilman Renninger has made a motion to suspend the rules. Is there a second? Seeing none, a motion to suspend the rules dies for lack of a second. So, this one, again, will automatically hold until our next regular council meeting. This concludes our regular agenda. Is there anything from the floor? Closing comments? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, thank you. I actually forgot to bring up something while I was up at the microphone earlier, but as we all know, we do not have a budget before us, and any expenditure of monies has to be approved by the council. And we're also all aware that our Mardi Gras parade is coming up on us very rapidly, and I have been, I have been talking, working with the chief today about our overtime on that, and I've also been working with local businesses on trying to find some way to defer the cost of our parade, our Mardi Gras parade, but I would actually, and I'm still in the process of doing that, so hopefully our, our cost of the parade will be a very minimum. And I would actually recommend that the council adopt a resolution at the next council meeting for this, and by that time, she'll be able to exactly what our cost will be for this parade. But because of the lack of communication that I have not been able to give to the, to all the citizens of Prattville, and there's been quite a few of them that have already been preparing for this parade, and the lack of our budget, I would recommend that from the council.
Thank you. We'll look forward to that presentation at our next meeting. Anything else? Okay, Councilman Wood?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Mayor, to make sure that I heard you correctly, you will give a figure, a recommendation of the cost?
I'm sorry, what was that?
You're going to give a recommendation of what to spend for the parade?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Another thing, back to resolution number two, we held it tonight, just for clarification, I want to make sure, maybe Ms. Thrash may need to answer this for me. Behind those figures where it said not to exceed, I want to make sure when this come back up, are those yearly figures on the firefighter and the...
Yes, for mining in this district area.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I recommend that when this resolution is written, that it have per year at the end of those amounts, that's what I mean, yearly figures, some may...
So, you want the figure to be not only for the remainder of the year, but you want to see the total figure for the whole year?
Let me make sure, make sure I'm clear on this. The figures that we have now is just for the remainder of this year, so the figures will be a little bit higher than what's on here then for a full year.
Yes.
Okay, that's all.
That's all, Councilman Wood. Councilman Argo?
Thank you, sir. Quickly, I just have a couple of things I'd like to talk about. First of all, I want to congratulate my friend Bill Gillespie on becoming mayor today. A lot of us, Mr. Beckman and Senator Taylor, I know that you're going to be able to relate to this. Sometimes you... Sometimes you find yourself in public service where you wonder, having to go through so much red tape, you wonder if you're actually going to be successful. You have to persevere, you have to keep your nose to the grindstone, and I know, Bill, that we've had that discussion over the last six years about whether or not we were making a difference, and obviously, God had a plan for you. He told you to stick with it, and now you get to lead our city. So I congratulate you, and I thank you for your service, and I look forward to working with you over the remainder of this term and whatever term that you should seek in the future. Secondly, I thank you for your recommendation on the parade. I've heard from a number of constituents who are interested in that parade. They feel it's one of the better attended and more exciting parades that we have in Prattville, the Mardi Gras parade, so I appreciate you doing that. And then, Mr. President, members of the council, you'll recall that two years ago, this council unanimously adopted a resolution to ask our legislative delegation to seek legislation allowing our city to offer draft beer. That legislation never went anywhere. We have two new representatives now, and not to throw, not to throw anything more on their plate, as they're going to be dealing with a difficult financial year. I do plan on bringing that back to the council at our next meeting. Had dinner the other evening at a local restaurant, and the owner felt like that we had kind of gone off and left him, that we had not fought through that, and as I explained to him, that the legislature must give us permission, so we must seek legislation. Anytime we have a local ordinance or a local bill like this that the legislature would have to seek, it requires that it be published in a newspaper and advertised for four weeks prior to Representative Beckman or Senator Taylor offering that on the House or Senate floor. So we're going to need to move on that fairly quickly if this council chooses to do so. So I'm going to have a resolution on our February 1st agenda, asking our local delegation to seek legislation, giving us, the City of Prattville, the permission to allow the sale of draft beer in the city. So I just didn't want to catch anybody off guard, and I certainly didn't want to catch them off guard, but since they were both sitting there, I thought I couldn't resist the temptation, at least making sure that they knew what our intentions were. But again, Mr. President, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Councilman Argo. Councilman Reneger?
Yes, sir. I don't have a report, but I do want to also offer my official congratulations to Mayor Gillespie. In my 15th year of public service, and I look forward to working with you and my fellow council members as we address the challenges that lay before us in moving the City of Prattville forward. Also, I'd like to thank my fellow council members, at least I think I need to thank them, for electing me as their president pro tempore. I know you don't need leadership, because we're all leaders up here, we've already proven that, but I will endeavor to do the best job that I can to assist you and to help you any way that I can, and to help conduct the meetings in an orderly fashion, and thank you for your support.
Thank you, Councilman Reneger. Councilman Bowles?
Yeah, to carry on with the sentiment, I want to congratulate Mayor Gillespie. It's going to be very hard saying, not saying Bill, but Mayor Gillespie, on your new role. I know you will lead the city, and I'm very excited working with you. And to Mr. Reneger, congratulations on your pro tem spot. Well deserved, and looking forward to working with you under this spot. Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you, Councilman Bowles. Councilman Fink?
Sure. I wanted to congratulate Bill as well, and to take the pressure off of you guys, I'll just admit that I've already accidentally called him Jim one time at my house the other night, so it happens, and he was okay with it. He still was, he left with a smile on his face, but congratulations, Bill.
Thank you, Councilman Fink. And I too want to add my congratulations to the mayor and tell you that I look forward to working with you. We were making a lot of progress over the past couple of months, and we're going to continue that, and anything that I can do to help or support you, I'm going to give that 110 percent. So I look forward to working with you. I also want to thank my fellow councilmen for their confidence in me in terms of electing me as pro tem Friday, and now knowing that that would lead back to the president's role. And I appreciate that, and I hope I live up to everyone's expectations and can, I still am working to get better. Each time we have a meeting, I go home and I make notes, and I do a little reading, and I brush up and whatnot, and can you give me a few minutes after we finish this meeting in that regard? But I do want to tell you, I appreciate your support, and, you know, we've got an awesome city, and we've got an awesome council, we've got an awesome mayor and awesome citizens and city employees are just, what should I say, also awesome, but we're poised to do some really good things, and I'm just excited beyond words. With that, do we hear a motion to adjourn?
I so move.
Second?
Second.
We adjourn.